We'll now call the Reedsville Planning Board Meeting to order. Let's do roll call. Thomas Thompson.
Present.
Tamara Lipscomb.
Present.
Dylan Moore.
Present.
Cindy Scarborough.
Present.
Joe Towns.
Present.
And William Roach.
Present.
First item on the agenda is election of the 2025 Chairperson. Do I just call for nominations at this time? Does anyone have any nominations? I don't think I can make nominations, can I?
You can suggest someone else do it.
You want to do it?
I'd like to nominate Cindy Scarborough as our Chairperson for 2025.
Make a motion.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we elect Cindy Scarborough as our Chairperson for 2025.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Vote is unanimous. Can you vote for her? Can she vote for herself?
I just didn't. It doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
Okay, I don't know.
She got the majority.
So now we move over, or do we carry on through elections?
Carry on. Yes, you do the Vice Chair.
Then we do Vice Chair.
Okay. Do I have any nominations for Vice Chairperson?
I make a motion to nominate Tamara Lipscomb for Vice Chairperson for 2025.
Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, please raise your right hand.
You didn't get a second.
A second.
I didn't. This is why I'm not being chairman, y'all.
That's what you're saying.
All right. Motion has now been made. Has a second. All those in favor, please raise your right hand and say aye.
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 Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You want us to move now? Like out of our...
We're not actually around yet.
All right.
The Chair will take your seat and...
We gotta play musical chairs here. Tamara, you come over here.
Okay.
Excuse me. Gary, I think I got all my stuff out of the way. Are we all good? All righty. Oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. Thank you for bearing with me. Oh, I didn't get that. You're pointing to my neck. I was okay.
Who's this thing?
Okay, great. All right. Thank you, Drew. All right, thanks for bearing with us. That was the first thing on our agenda. So the next point on our agenda is approval of the minutes from the December 18th, 2024 Planning Board Meeting. Has everyone reviewed those? Does anyone have any corrections or comments?
I'll make a motion. We accept the minutes from the last meeting.
I see.
All in favor? All right. Next on our agenda is the item for consideration. Consideration of a rezoning request for a property located on Gibbs Lake Road, Rockingham County Parcel Number 142535Z1, to assign an initial city of Reedsville zoning designation of conditional zoning residential 12, CZR12. The applicant is Legacy Investment and Development LLC. The property owner is Richardson Family Trust with William F. McLeod and Dorothy Smothers-Richardson, trustees. The property owner is requesting voluntary annexation of the subject property, docket number Z 202501. Jason?
Thank you, members of the Board. Good evening. Legacy Investment and Development LLC is petitioning with written consent of the current owner. We know that's important because of Senate Bill 382. We called about this. With the consent of the current owner to have an initial city of Reedsville zoning designation of conditional zoning residential 12, CZR12, assigned to the property located off of Gibbs Lake Road. This is Rockingham County Tax Parcel Number 142535Z1. The owner of the property listed on the tax record is Richardson Family Trust, Karen William F. McLeod, and Dorothy Smothers-Richardson, trustees. The owner is also petitioning for voluntary annexation, although it's not contained within the city limit. The property will require an initial city zoning designation for the remainder of it that's not in the city limit. So the frontage of it is, it has actually two zoning designations, and then the rear, most of it, is not contained within the city, so it's county zoning of RA. The owner and the applicant may submit a petition for annexation and rezoning concurrently with the understanding that the zoning is contingent upon approval of the annexation request. So what y'all are looking at tonight is the initial zoning. So next month before council, they will consider the annexation first with the petition that's been submitted. At council last night, they approved the investigation resolution that allows the clerk to investigate the petition for annexation, and that at the next meeting, they'll do the annexation first. If that passes, then they'll move on to the rezoning. So it's that way you lock both of them in at once, because we have a timetable that we have to assign an initial designation under the general statutes. So the parcel encompasses a total combined area of 137.23 acres. I know there was some confusion there. On the tax card, it shows 17 deed acreage. We actually called the deeds office, Drew, and they told us that that refers to the amount of acreage in the city limits. That is not the total area. So the total area that's also on the tax card is 137.238. So that, just to clear that up. The land includes a mix of city highway business zoning and residential agricultural RA20, along with, as I said, Rockingham County residential agricultural zoning in the unincorporated area. Existing water and sewer services are available. City water sewers are located in the right-of-way, a freeway drive, and another sewer main crosses the southwestern corner of the parcel. Note that capacity to support this development is contingent upon upgrades to the Forest Drive pump station that serves the area. Funds have been allocated for the design of the pump station, but not for construction of the upgrades at present time. So that's something that council will need to consider for us to accommodate the development with sewer. And they've started. We just haven't gotten to the full construction phase yet. There are several waterways flowing across the property, as you can see from the plan that's up on the screens in your packets. As the property is located in the Jordan Lake watershed, any development must include 50-foot riparian buffers from each stream bank to assist in protecting water quality. So for the first 30 feet, you couldn't do anything.
The next 20 feet, you can grade.
Then you have to re-vegetate. So it's trying to keep pollution out of the water. That's what root systems help do. The flood insurance rate map, or the FARM, as it's known, indicates no flood planes on site. A conditional zoning request, as we know, amends the zoning map with site-specific conditions incorporated into the amendment. This allows the owner and developer to place voluntary conditions on the land with the intent of restricting allowable uses within the new zoning district, or to ask for deviations from certain standards. The owner and applicant get to choose which of the allowable uses they seek for the district. In this case, R12, so CZR12. It's kind of a parallel district, the way it is in the ordinance currently, and what they would like to develop on the land. The owner and the applicant have requested to limit allowable use to single-family detached dwellings. In addition, the applicant has provided the required concept master plan, which you can see on the screens. Per Article 5, Section 1 of the zoning ordinance, any major change that alters the density of the development, decreases the use of compatible design features, decreases pedestrian features, or changes the use, is approved for the property must again go before the planning board and city council for approval. So that's what we call a major change, if you're changing any of those things. There's some other things, too, like increasing access ways, like if you're adding entryways into increasing traffic. That has to come back to council. Minor changes, which do not rise to the level of a major change, may be approved administratively by the planning director. Approval of the concept plan does not issue approval for construction. A preliminary plat review must still be completed by the city's technical review committee, the TRC, along with applicable construction drawings for infrastructure. So all of this does, as we know with these, we've done, this is just for the concept attached with the conditional zoning. They can't go out tomorrow and start building in rather than council. It's still a good construction plan review to make sure it meets all the city's standards. The proposed concept master plan they provided includes construction of 274 single-family detached dwellings on this parcel, which is located within the Troublesome Creek watershed. Just a general reminder on what watersheds are. A watershed is a geographic area of land or runoff. That means the water flowing downhill, it flows downhill to a single water source. There's two watersheds located in the city of Reedsville. The first is the Troublesome Creek watershed, which recharges Lake Reedsville. So everything in the Troublesome Creek watershed flows to Lake Reedsville. It's a drinking source. We also have the Jordan Lake watershed. We're at the very end of it, right to the north. So that all flows, I think, down toward Wake County and everything down toward where Lake Jordan is. So that's a huge lake, so we're right at the top of that. That just incurs the buffers that I mentioned. But the Troublesome Creek watershed incurs a built-up-on-area limit for any development which is not single-family detached dwellings. So it's limited to two units per acre for single-family detached dwellings. Any other development, commercial, multifamily, like apartments and things, would be limited to 24% built-up-on area. So 274 units meets the two units per acre density cap for single-family detached dwellings in the Troublesome Creek watershed. The lot area is 137.238 times two units an acre, which equals 274.476. They're dead on. A community clubhouse is also planned as a part of the development. That does have to adhere to the 24% built-up-on area, but they're well under it, because the single-family detached dwellings don't count. It's just the non-single-family development. A cluster development provision removing the minimum lot size is allowed by right in Article 14 of the zoning ordinance. This is the watershed water supply regulations as a means to reduce impact on the surrounding natural area. However, the water supply watershed regulations do not allow deviation from the applicable setback requirements for that underlying zoning district. The applicant is requesting a side yard setback in the conceptual master plan of five feet for interior lots and 10 feet for corner lots. This is a five-foot reduction for interior lots and a 15-foot reduction for corner lots. Staff does find that the reduction in side yard setbacks is reasonable as a means to reduce encroachment into the natural environment and reduce the overall environmental footprint of construction, since this is in our watershed. The more that we can save, the better, essentially, in this situation. The applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting on December 19th at the Reedsville Recreation Center to discuss their proposed project with adjacent property owners. The proposed conditional rezoning aligns with goal number three of the Reedsville Land Development Plan to expand housing. This includes expanding the housing stock and providing a variety of housing options that are attractive and affordable to people of all income levels. The property is located in Growth Management Area Number Three, suburban, which surrounds the city center, primarily encompassing the areas to the south, southwest, north, northwest, and west of the city. Growth Management Area Three is predominantly characterized by a mix of residential and commercial development with ample vacant land available for development. According to the Land Development Plan, Growth Management Area Three prioritizes the expansion of residential development and provides an existing transportation network capable of accommodating growth. Additionally, GMA Three residential development is in close proximity to commercial office and industrial employment, as well as retail services. Staff finds the proposed conditional rezoning to be consistent with the Reedsville Land Development Plan, that it's reasonable and in the public interest based on the aforementioned information that was provided in this report and the attached statements of reasonableness and consistency in your packets, and the planning staff recommend that the proposed conditional rezoning be approved. I'll be happy to answer any of your questions.
Two questions, Jason. So the first one was about the annexation. Do they also need to get permission from the county, since it's currently county land? Or...
It's the private property owner. The only thing the state law requires is the property owner has to submit a voluntary petition, because the state outlawed involuntary annexation basically several years ago. So it's voluntary, so it's just at the property owner's discretion.
Okay. And then the second question I had is, I was a little confused by that one paragraph about the watershed regulations. It says the watershed regulations do not allow deviation from the applicable setback requirements, but yet we're also, but we are approving, we are approving deviations. That's why I got a little confused on that. Sorry.
So what the cluster development provisions do is it removes the minimum lot size. So R12 incurs a 12,000 square foot minimum lot size. So what the cluster development does is it eliminates that minimum lot size, but it doesn't get rid of the setback.
Right.
So it still follows those underlying setbacks. So what they've asked for to assist with the cluster development is to reduce that side yard setback, to get things a little bit tighter, just so they don't encroach further. That's what's been conveyed to us in the application. So yeah, that's what you're looking at with the concept plan, and that's what would be approved for, for the rezoning, if it is approved.
I completely agree. Sorry.
Is that recommendation that they not do what the regulations say good enough?
Right, that's where I was confused.
That recommendation is that the plan, the rezoning be approved based off the plan that they provided. Yes, sir.
Yeah, so what you're saying is that it's...
The water thing that Cindy was asking about.
It isn't override, so, well, it's allowing that small deviation, because the ordinance does not override, the cluster development removes that minimum lot size, but they're asking for, in their conditional zoning request, is to just reduce that side yard setback just a little bit further. So the conditional zoning is just the reason for that. But we, like I said, we find that reasonable to assist in this instance with the cluster development, and it's in our watershed, to try to prevent more encroachment into the environment. Because as you increase setbacks and as you increase lot sizes, you get bigger and bigger, you're getting further and further into those green areas.
I got another question.
Yes, sir.
On the other page over here, it says this is a conditional zoning request with an attached site-specific vesting plan.
That's correct.
And that expires in two years?
That's correct.
Is the sewage plant gonna be ready in two years if it's still only been approved to plant it?
Well, it's just a pump station, so it wouldn't be a brand-new plant. It would just be a pump station. They're looking to do upgrades to the forest screen.
I mean, where does it leave these guys if...
It's not done.
The sewage plant's not up to speed.
That would be something I would have to talk with the Public Works Director, and that would be up to council to approve. Yes, sir.
I know that that's not a recent problem, you know, the fact that it's not up to speed now goes way back, but it's just something I was wondering about. It kind of leaves...
And we have discussed that in our meeting we've had with the applicant, that we are working on the upgrades to the pump station.
All right. So any more questions from the board for Jason? Everybody all right? All right, so then I guess we can ask for anyone who would like to speak for or against this proposal. You can come up and give your name, come up to the podium here and give your name and address.
You want to start with the four? Four?
We start with four?
Start with four.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Good evening, members of the planning board. Jason, thank you very much. It was very informative. My name is Blaine Jackson, and I represent Legacy Investment and Development, and just wanted to kind of, I guess, come up and introduce myself. We have Vince Townsend back here, who is RP, is an engineer who's working on the design, and then David Clark is my partner here. So just wanted to answer any questions that any of the planning board members might have.
Is your only access egress on freeway drive?
That's correct.
And you can't turn left coming out of there?
That's correct. Yes, sir.
Are you concerned with the same thing that Joe Towns has brought up about the pumping station possibly not being ready?
It's been a concern of ours, and it brought it up early on. Over a year ago, we discussed this, and we were told by the, I guess, the utilities director, that they ensured us that the pump station, once they saw activity coming that direction, and they knew they needed that capacity, that they would start work on that pump station. So it is concerning. It can be a concern, but the Public Works Director has done a decent job of calming our nerves on that one.
All right, thank you. Does anyone else have any more questions? Everybody all right?
Actually, with the map, I'm seeing here, you got actually two points of ingress and egress, and that's actually off of Gibbs Lake Road. Is that correct?
We do have multiple points of ingress on Gibbs Lake Road, yes.
It all goes out to freeway?
It all falls out of freeway.
Yeah, it all falls out to freeway.
Or freeway drive.
He's saying there's points of egress for Gibbs Lake Road, but it still all goes out to freeway? Yeah. All right. Any other questions? Thank you very much. I apologize for earlier. Anyone else who'd like to speak for, for this proposal?
Vince Townsend, 1A Wendy Court, Greensboro is my address. I'm the civil engineer working on the project for these guys, and with the help of your staff, I feel like we've done a pretty good job of complying with your land development ordinance, and I'm in favor of the plan being approved. I wanted to mention one thing about, you know, the sewer capacity, if you're concerned about it. One thing to consider is this is a multiple-phase project, and it's going to take, you know, years to develop the whole thing, to get all of the flow that's going to be produced by it eventually. And I don't know how long the first phase will take before you actually have any residents producing wastewater, but I don't know. It's probably six to 12 months. Six months would be before we could break ground, and then you would have to develop the land and build the homes. I don't know what...
You'd have minimum 20, 30 months.
Yeah, so you're probably looking at two years before there's actually any wastewater flow from the site. Let's see, there was something else I was going to mention. I guess I forgot what it was, but if you have any questions, I'm here to help in any way I can. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am with Blaine Jackson, and one thing that we did that, we've been working with Jason and his group, was we put a sidewalk down Gibbs Lake Road.
I did see that.
And that was part of the reasons they were willing to work with us on cutting the setbacks from 10 to 5 feet. So I think that sidewalk is actually going to be a real plus for the development. I just wanted to point that out.
I did notice that, thank you. We definitely need more sidewalks and walkability in general.
There's one on freeway drive, too, Vinner.
Yes.
There is one on freeway, right?
Yes.
Yeah, that's what I... Yeah, that's good. Good, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak for this proposal? All right, would anyone like to speak against this proposal? And just your name and your address, please.
My name's Mark Kraus, and my address is 223 Forest Drive, which is just behind this development. One question, do I have like a time limit? I'm only going to be a few minutes, but I didn't, some places you only have like a couple minutes to speak or something.
Not necessarily. Maybe if it was, you know, 20 minutes in, we might say something.
I don't know. Many of our neighbors are against this development for a couple reasons. Number one, it doesn't fit with the character of the rest of the area. Most everything else in this area is probably houses have, we'll say, half-acre, one-acre lots and things like that. It's not very, it's not congested like this is going to be. Another big concern is there's only one access point, Gibbs Lake Road, and as someone else has mentioned, there is nothing there except you turn right in, you turn right out. So at some point, I'm sure when there's 200-plus houses in there, there's going to have to be an interchange put in there. My concern is for the taxpayers, that the taxpayers are going to be paying for this. The taxpayers are going to be paying for all this infrastructure that's going on when it should be the developer's responsibility to do this and not be stuck with existing taxpayers. I expect most of these houses will be purchased by citizens who don't currently live here, and so therefore, again, it's going to be stuck on us. Our taxes are very high right now, and I don't feel like this should be put on us. I don't know if anybody objects to that, but I just really don't see why we should be stuck with that. If these houses were more dispersed, again, like the adjacent neighborhoods, I don't think this would be a problem. The septic, not septic, the pumping station is just down the street from my house, and I've seen it before. It's not very large. It could comfortably fit in this room, it seems like. So I don't know how much of an issue that's going to be getting that replaced, how much of an inconvenience for the residents of that area is going to be. And a neighbor of mine, I believe his property is going to have to agree to you having a pipeline run through his property. So he's not here to speak. Yes, he is. He's here hopefully to speak on this. And while I like the idea now that Dr. Richardson's family has decided they want to propose this agreement, and my biggest thing is they're going to ask to be annexed, my biggest concern here is while this annexation was not given to us like 25 years ago, because our property was taken from us by force, and we were forcibly annexed into the city, can you de-annex my property?
I doubt it, but that is a question, I think, probably more for city council, correct?
I'll be the general assembly. No, the annexation can be approved without approval from the general assembly.
The general assembly just approved the annexation for Summerfield. Correct. But the city can approve that.
That takes an act of the general assembly.
So would you be opposed to me having my property de-annexed?
That would, I could say, at least, at least for either city council or assembly, that would definitely be beyond the scope of our planning board for sure. Yes.
Because I received absolutely zero benefit from being there, other than my taxes have doubled. I have my own well, I have my own septic system. I don't need anything else. I'm paying $2,000 a year to have my garbage picked up, and I think that's very excessive.
So that would, I understand, because I know that taxes are pretty high in the city. I mean, I live here, too, but I think that would be definitely something, that would be more at least city council level than for the planning board, because we don't handle any, the annexation, as Jason did explain, is going to be, that's going to be decided by city council, not us. The annexation part is not part of what we're, we're just doing the conditional zoning today. That's it. So yeah, we don't have that power. Thank you. But thank you. I can see if maybe they might be able to address some, like, for example, the egress and the Gibbs Road congestion, we can definitely talk about that today.
So currently, again, this is going to put a lot more capacity needs on the current system. Like you said, they were probably planning to do some expansion in the future, but currently, who's going to be paying for this? That's going to be the current taxpayers. Is that correct? That's going to be the current taxpayers, is that correct?
I would assume so, but I don't know what changes, I think this is what we, this is the question I want to ask to the developers, is to talk about the road and what the plan is for that, because they, we didn't really talk about that too much. So that would be...
I think this Gibbs Road is going to create a lot of traffic.
Well, that would be, that would be a question for the developers and what their plan is for that. So that is something I would actually like them to address if they could, and I think they probably can.
Okay.
Does that sound good? Yeah, okay, good. Can one of you be able to address maybe some of the issues that potential traffic on Gibbs Road would be and congestion? That would be great. Thank you.
So this will all go before the TRC and NC DOT is part of that technical review committee. And they will make suggestions based on how they feel. Trip counts and everything that flows down Gibbs Lake turns right off of Gibbs Lake onto Freeway Drive or turns in to Gibbs Lake from Freeway Drive. So NC DOT will have that opportunity during the TRC technical review committee meetings that we will do when we go through our construction drawing phase. And then they will, they will either say this works or this doesn't work, or they'll provide ideas for another alternative, essentially.
Will there be a way to communicate that to the citizens that are concerned of what's going on with that or what, how that's progressing? Or is there any way to be able to do that so that they can, so they know how that's kind of been worked out within the technical review committee for the, to address their concerns? Because you, you're, because you, I mean, I understand it's the future and it's hard to answer their questions right now, but is there any way to be able to keep them informed based on your meetings?
I'm not sure if the city has any kind of way that they...
Yeah, I mean, once it gets to the point of site plan review, it's all staff approval, but if the developer would like to know if either of those are...
I mean, we're happy to keep people informed as to what is happening, so, and, you know, we'll take their information and pass that along.
Okay, yeah.
Make sure back to them.
Because, I mean, it certainly, I've been on this, this board for a bit and it really seems that it's, it's most helpful is if you can really keep it open communication with the citizens that are concerned and, you know, make sure they, let them know about what's going on with that. And if there is going to be a need for a whole, like, a significant expansion of the road or whatever, that they, like, what their concern is that it's going to drive up their taxes, that they at least are informed that that might be happening.
As far as the pump station goes, I mean, that is, that was approved through city council a year, over a year ago, I believe, when they voted on funding the engineering of, the design of the set pump station. So, you know, there's, city taxes are collected and then that's how they're used. I mean, you guys know that that's how they're, they're decided upon, voted upon how certain money is allocated. So, so yes, tax dollars do go to those things.
Yeah. All right, well, thank you. Thank you for trying to answer his questions. Is there anyone else who would like to speak against the proposal? Is board members have any other questions or concerns for anyone?
Jason, can you, what is the normal setbacks for R12?
As I said, the normal side yard is 10 feet. Normal corner lot, side yard is, I believe, 10.
And as far as the back, how far is the back?
They're not asking for a deviation.
There are no deviations.
I believe it's 20 feet for the rear yard and 25 foot for the front yard.
Anyone else have any other questions? Sorry. Just, uh, do we have a hand up somewhere? Summer? Thank you.
Can I have a seat on the pump station? That seems to be...
Oh, sure. Thank you, Summer.
Summer, we're a city manager. I just wanted to, I was texting back and forth with our public works director to make sure we're on the same page. But the concern with the pump station, it's in the design phases now. As he spoke earlier, that was something that was funded by the city last year. It is, hopefully, the design should be on schedule to be complete by this summer. Depending on, you know, with development, it would be ready to roll out within construction what's designed as complete. So we are on schedule there. So I just wanted to clarify that, because I know that is an item of concern with...
Summer...
Yes, sir.
The redesign of that and expanding of that, was that going to happen regardless of...
Correct.
Of this? So this was something that was already...
We have saw a lot of development and we just want to make sure that our utilities can hold the development we're seeing and then the future development we know that's coming to Reedsville.
Okay.
So, just wanted to clear that up, because there's some questions.
Thank you.
This is going to happen either way.
I think that's one thing the city now can be complimented for, is they are getting on this thing. It's kind of laid dormant for a long time. They're on top of it.
Preparing for growth.
Yes.
I think that's a, it's a steep ask for the setbacks, but because of the watershed, I think it's reasonable.
Right. That was the same thing I felt too.
Like their own little hardship.
Okay. So if no one else would like to speak, then we will close the public here, public portion of this and the board will discuss before we vote.
Just to what I said before.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion to recommend the proposed rezoning be approved for the specified parcels to be requested. Zoning district based upon the consistency and recent statements that are included in the council agenda packet submitted for the rezoning presentation and as may be amended, incorporated into the motion to be included in the minutes.
Second.
All in favor, raise their right hand. Aye. Any, any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right, next on our agenda. All right, so next on our agenda is the director's report.
Thank you. Not too much to report on since we've come back from the holidays and everything. We have approved the preliminary plat for the Sherwood Glen development off of Sherwood Drive. That's the 48 single-family homes, that conditional zoning, which also came before y'all. So we have approved the preliminary plat for it. It goes now to the Bulwark's Department and our engineering consultant to review their construction plans. So they'll have to go through their review and then once that's approved, then they can move on to construction of utilities and grading and so forth.
How many lots did you say, Alfred? How many lots did you say is going in there?
Is that 48?
48, yeah, that's right. I couldn't remember. I remember us talking about it.
That's mostly it. They're working on the apartments, as you can see, the road throwing them up up there. They've been working hard since the holidays, seeing those constructed and everything. We don't know the completion time yet. I know that the inspectors have been doing a lot of inspections out there. You know, any new business is true. I know that Screen Print Plus, Dylan's family, y'all moved to a new building downtown. So we approved that zoning compliance permit. They're working on renovation right now. Yeah, that's mostly all we have right now going on.
What's going on there? Don't look around, Bill.
I have not heard anything recently on it. They painted the roof and then it's been kind of radio silence. It's, we haven't heard anything on my end.
How about the housing subdivision that they're looking to build off of, was it Liberty Road?
Oh, yes. Yeah, thank you for reminding me of that. So the first phase did clear construction plan review through Bulwark's and the engineering consultants, so they have full green light from the city to start constructing utilities and constructing infrastructure.
Where is this case?
It's all in their court now. What was that?
I'm sorry, where is that?
Off Liberty Road.
Off McCoy Road.
Yeah. Or before, as I've heard it called. Yeah, so it's all in their court now. Once they've got all their state approvals and everything, they're good to go. For the first phase, which is 149 in the first phase.
Are they effective by this water? Pumping station as well?
No, they had to construct their own pump station.
They had to construct their own.
They're served by a different one on that side and they actually had to build a brand new one because of the impact down there. So that's one thing that they're finishing up, I think, is the pump station design and everything. So they'll be building a brand new one.
And then anything more for the lot across Carter Ridge?
What was that?
Anything more about the lot across Reed Street?
Yes, so they are working on their annexation request. They're working on their petition for voluntary annexation. So their surveyor had a few things to correct on the plat that they submitted to us. As soon as they finish that and submit the petition and everything, they'll start the process, just like the Gibbs Lake Road owner has. So, yeah, they're working on, I foresee that coming down probably in the next month.
Any other restaurants coming to town?
Every month.
Dirty Laundry's coming.
Dirty Laundry?
Mm-hmm.
Dirty Laundry.
He's hoping to...
What is Dirty Laundry?
That's the, it's a tap room, but it's also going to be a restaurant now.
Okay.
On the corner of Settle and Gilmer.
It used to be the whole laundry.
No, not Settle and Gilmer, Settle and Scales. Settle and Scales.
It used to be the dry cleaner.
Okay.
Yeah, right on.
I got you, that's...
So he's going to, it's going to be a restaurant also, and I think he's hoping to be open by the, by June.
What kind of restaurant are we looking at?
Like a Mediterranean kind of.
Mediterranean?
Yeah. That's, hopefully. I like the SB 382 summary that you sent from the, I think Dylan said he had some questions too, but also in regards to that, what's the progress on our UDO?
So we are going to do another meeting as we, so we would with council. We've sent out those dates where we're going, setting that data, meet with them again. So we're going to be working with them for now. And as soon as we get more policy guidance, we'll schedule another hearing committee meeting to go over the remaining articles, because this kind of through, then the holidays, you know, kind of through the consultants, through a loop. We're getting back on it once we get through this next meeting. So hopefully in the near future, we'll see some more drafts come down once we get a little more policy guidance.
I have a question, but I don't know if it's planning board or city council or city manager. Penrose Mall. Okay, I'm just leaving it right there.
That was a collective, that was a collective sigh. My goodness.
Okay, I'm just, that's all I need to say. But it's, um, yeah. Just don't go in there on a rainy day, you know, with the snow. I mean, you have to dodge. Everybody knows if you go in there, you go to Roses, you've got a, you're literally doing a maze through the buckets just to get to the store. And it's, you know, at one time, you know, I grew up here...
Now Schrader's gone, so why else are you going to go except for that and the flower shop?
When I grew up here, you know, it was a small mall, but it looked so nice and now it's just almost like an asshole. Yes, ma'am.
So can I speak on a couple things?
Absolutely.
Well, first of all, welcome 2025. Just want to thank each of you for your service and your dedication. You're a very valuable member to our team here at Team Reedsville. So thank you. I try to come to planning board, I've not been in a while, so I want to just kind of poke my head in and just tell you all, thank you so much. A couple updates just from us. We appreciate your stewardship as we went through this UDO process. We still have a lot of work to do and we know that. So we don't want you or anyone to feel pressured in talking with Jason and our team, like, we want to make sure we get this right, whether it takes us, you know, six months or longer, especially now given what we're up against with the passage of this bill, to get it right. So we appreciate you serving as our steering committee, as Mayor Gorman and council work through this as well. So we don't want to rush it through, just know that we appreciate your patience as we look at these that affect, I mean, growth and development for the city of Reedsville. So just want to talk a little bit about that. The second thing I did want to talk about is water and sewer. So that is, I think you guys are doing a great job asking those questions, especially from a planning board perspective. You see, you see it first. A lot of times you and staff are front line before it gets to Mayor Gorman, City Council, when you see all this development that's here and proposed and coming, whether it's six months or two years, we have to be prepared for it. And I think our staff has done a great job in trying to get a CIP plan, which is a comprehensive improvements plan, that looks at the needs of the city's water and sewer infrastructure for the next 10 years. Of course, we evaluate every single year as we go through the budget process. And unfortunately, a lot of times, the need that we have for this infrastructure, that is why the utility rate had to go up this year, is to be able to ensure that we are growing and that we can provide safe and clean drinking water and free our sanitary sewer properly. We want to make sure, one of the things, we've got a great partnership going with the county right now. One of the things they've been working with the city on is they're actually working with us on a study of our wastewater treatment plant to see what long-term capacity is, just to make sure we can start planning, because we can't plan, you got to plan now because it's going to be here before we know it. So I just want to commend you, those are all great questions. That's something that is a huge priority for our city council and our mayor. It's a huge priority for our staff right now, is to ensure that we have that infrastructure for water and sewer. Penrose Mall, I will state this duly noted, that is something that planning has been looking at along with our fire department. So our council has been briefed on that, so we take it very serious and we are definitely evaluating that closer.
Thank you. We have a lot of citizens that, you know, once you come to planning board, people inbox you and text you and stuff and like, hey, can you bring this up? It's a big concern for the citizens of Reedsville, I've heard it. And I'm sure you have.
And anytime you, you guys get that as planning board, give them, you know, our contact number, staff, my cards are out, Jason, any of us, and we're happy to go over that, because, you know, they may be frequenting facilities that we maybe don't see what an issue is. That one, we can see through some of the videos and stuff that's out there, but definitely tell them to communicate that with us, because that's just documentation and we want to make sure that everybody's provided a safe manner to, to be able to live, work and play here, so. But I appreciate the opportunity just to come and talk to you and I just want to tell you, thank you, and you guys do a great job. And I think 2025 is going to be our year and you guys are instrumental in that, so thank you.
Thank you, Summer.
Thank you, Summer.
I do have one more thing after, and I neglected to mention, the council, the city council did approve the special use permit for the transfer station at Kleaner last night.
Oh, yes.
Okay.
That was the only item I have on the agenda than the, I mentioned during that presentation, so that's all I have.
Jason, do y'all know that there's a gaming establishment next to Bonita Pizza and it looks like their blinds are consistently closed? I know that that's, I know that's code enforcement, but it's...
That's your problem, yes. We're code enforcement too.
Yeah, so it, there's a, and there's a, oh, a smell that emanates from there that's...
This is a permitted game, NFT gaming establishment, so we know we have that text amendment that we're permitted. They are supposed to have the blinds open, but they're under our new standards that we took to council, so if you'd like to, listen, look into it, be glad to.
I think there's some enforcement issues with it.
We'll leave the police department aware as well. Glad to.
Any other questions for Jason? Council members, I mean, board members, do you have any, any comments? We are upgraded, I guess I've already asked. Board members, do you have anything you would like to share?
Cindy and tomorrow, congratulations on y'all's election chair position.
Thank you.
You did a fantastic job as chairperson last year.
Thank you, Dylan. Thank you, Dylan.
Thank you. Shout out to Drew and Claudia. I got it right.
Love it, I'm loving this.
Oh, yeah, we love, we love our binders.
Reference material.
Love our binders.
Yeah. Now I know with some of these acronyms, so thank you so much. Thank you for the time. It took a lot of time and effort.
Do we carry these home or do y'all keep them here?
I will keep them here and they'll be updated for you every month, but I will send you a copy in digital or physical, whatever you prefer, of the information that's in the document.
Yes.
That's some training and...
Yes, that's...
...to help you with motions, to help you with proceedings, some definitions, process these kinds of stuff.
Yeah, I'd like to read over that. Yeah, I'd like to read over that at home, and have the time. Thank you. All right. All right, well, if there isn't any other comments or concerns, then we, I think we need a motion to adjourn?
Motion, we adjourn.
Accepted.
All in favor? Thank you. We have adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you.